Information you can add that would be helpful to us. This is, this meeting is being livestreamed and in addition to the notes that the staff are taking will, will inform us. Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Calling the first case, BOA 554022, 42 Dennis Street. This is direct, a new three-family dwelling. Violations Article 50, Section 29, lot size to erect a new dwelling is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, lot width is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, required side yard setback is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, floor-to-air ratio is excessive and Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Maya Tal Baker. This is our property, our property as well, so we are the owners but also the architects.
Tell us what you're proposing. Tell us what you're proposing.
We're proposing a three-family which is, works with the neighborhood. Both of our butters on both sides are three-family, they're triple-deckers, same-size building, same number of units. Our lot is just undersized.
She is proposing an infill development?
I guess so. It's, it's currently empty land, yeah.
Okay. And tell us about the parking?
The parking currently, we, so because we own it, we're going to be living on the ground floor, we don't own cars. What we're proposing is to put two parking spots in the front because the property is very narrow. If we were to put three parking spots, we mean, it means that we would have to pave the whole backyard and we won't get any open space. And also, we have, currently, this used to be a garage and there's two big curb cuts that go into the property. We're going to be giving one of those back and creating sidewalk to the street, so basically we're going to add another parking spot to the street right in front of the house.
Just, just a reminder, and this is a reminder to everybody, that the relief goes with the property and not with the ownership. So we just need to make sure that's on the record. So tell us about the parking. Where is, where is it located?
It's going to be in, it's the side of the building. In front of, some part of the building, but inside of the main entry of the building, it's going to be permeable paving. So besides the building itself, we're not going to have any, any asphalt, anything. It's all going to be permeable around the whole building to maximize green space. It's going to be covered with the, with the deck up above, so it won't be very noticeable. And then, as I said, we're adding another parking spot to the street.
Okay. Ms. Bizani, tell us about the plans.
Uh, drawings are adequate.
And so that is, in fact, side yard parking?
It is side yard parking.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support. They have met with the DSNI Sustainability Committee and they are also in strong support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin Brown from Counselor Jackson's office, and he would like to give his support.
Thank you.
Maria Sori, owner of 46 Dennis Street. I am Director Butter and I am in support. I think the building will be a great addition to the neighborhood and I, I really love the plans.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval, BRA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
I'm going to go back to an early case at 9:30 for building code, so I'm going to call for the record, BOA 585095, 27 to 35 Harrison Avenue. This is building code, Section 101, 5.2, exit or exit access doorway arrangement. Required exit shall be located in the manner that makes their availability obvious. 101, 015, 2.1. Two exits or exits access doorways where two exits or exits access doorways are required from any portion of the exit access. Name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Press, 33 Harrison Avenue, Boston, Mass. Secretary Treasurer, Ladies Government Orgas Center. We have a, we have a fire escape that services the second, third, and fourth floor of an eight-story building, so it doesn't service half the building. We do have two means of egress on every floor of the building. The building is fully sprinklered. The building also has a fully functional fire alarm and so therefore we're asking approval to take the fire escape down.
Mr. Bizani, is that shown on the plans?
Yes. And the reason for taking the fire escape down is what?
Well, there's an aesthetic value to the building. We'd like to take it off. Again, we don't feel it's functional and so we would just like to remove it. In, in the past, there have been instances where the ladder was pulled down and so we just feel that it would be a benefit to the building and to the neighborhood to take the fire escape down.
How old is the building?
The building was built in 1908.
How long has it been sprinkled?
Uh, the building has been sprinkled for way before I've been there, so I, I would only be guessing, but I would say at least 20 years.
How many?
At least 20 years, probably more.
I mean, I'm reluctant to make a motion to grant building code relief purely on the basis of aesthetics. I mean, that's really, that's what you're asking for. You have a building code violation and there's no other mitigating elements that you presented in terms of how you wish to address that. It's simply complete removal.
Other than, like I say, that the fire escape doesn't service half the building, so it, it doesn't really, it, it's not functional because it only services two, three, and four.
For half the building, it certainly is.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, a motion to deny building code relief. You always have the option of going directly to the state.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Calling a next case for BOA 576548, 2489 to 2493 Washington Street. This is to combine eight vacant lots, construct new four-story buildings with two commercial spaces on the first floor, one commercial space to be a restaurant with takeout, upper three floors to be dwelling units with a total of 12 units. Violations Article 50, Section 11, railyard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street loading is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members. Clayton Turnbull, law, long-life, living Boston resident, Jamaica Plain, with me here.
The architect, Timothy Burke. The business address is 142 Berkeley Street in Boston.
Director of Operations, Kevin Reynolds, South End, Boston.
Thank you for having us here this morning. We appear in front of you asking for these variants. The city of Boston had put out an RFP for the development of these several parts of land. We comply with their requests. We got designated. Our vision is to build a Class A-type building that we're able to getting, you know, present as a transit-oriented development. As you know, we're located in Dudley Square. We've owned and operated a business in Dudley Square since 1994 and still operate today. It is the largest bus station in the country in capacity of 35,000 to 40,000 people a day on and off. We're excited about Dudley Square. We're excited about the development. If we're granted permission by you folks and go forward, it will create upwards of 35 permanent new jobs. It'll be four stories high. The architect will get into the details in answering your questions. The top three stories will be 12 units of housing, as you see, three twos on each floor and one one on each floor. Just as exciting, on the first floor, we'll have a, two retail spaces there. One, we're in LOI conversations right now with Eastern Bank, which has won over the last seven years and the number-one SBA lender in the state. We're hoping and we think bringing a SBA lender to Dudley Square will be exciting and even more exciting, to the left of them, will be Dunkin' Donuts, which we will, as you know, own and operate in that square and continue the commitment to the square. So with that, I will move it on to Tim and have him do a brief description of things that I think you might want to know about what we're asking for variants as our today. We think this transit-oriented development will be a sharp move for the neighborhood from a advantage point of view because folks will be able to live there, they'll be able to get right on the silver line, the regular lines. We foresee the articles even up to this morning talking about the city growing, that this will be the way of living in the city going forward and our young and professionals that live in the city and live in that neighborhood, I think will be excited to want to also be in those apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, can you get to the core of the matter? Talk about the dimensions, the off-street loading, because if there is going to be a takeout at Dunkin' Donuts, I'm sure that will be relevant. And also the off-street parking, what is required and what is being proposed?
Yes, in terms of the off-street parking, we are required to have 17 spaces total, but we were only able to get 14 onto the site. Given the transit-oriented development, we thought that would be...
And what's off-street parking around there? Some, there's...
Correct. You can park right on Washington along there, yes.
Okay.
The deliveries would be coordinated with the operation of the restaurant space, the Dunkin' Donuts. So we do have a fairly large parking lot on the side that would serve as off-hour delivery area, but we don't have the room for a real receiving area with this site.
So if I'm a resident in one of the units above, I'm going to have to move my car for the loading to occur?
No. So currently, on the other stores that we have in the area, directly, Eggleston Square, it has zero parking. It's done on-street and it's coordinated by a distribution center. The only trucks we have coming there is from the distribution center twice a week and that's coordinated. That's done on-street. It's not items that we need a shipping and receiving area for.
Yes, but what does that do to the traffic around? So the other question is, and the parking is 14, you're required to have 17 and you're providing 14?
That's correct.
And the bulk of it will be for residences?
Yes, it is.
Okay? And how will the deliveries be coordinated with the residential uses above?
Delivery in the sense of...
Of your, the, the restaurant delivery?
I, I would say on a, on a high-degree level, they'll, they'll never make it in the parking lot. It'll be done on-street just because of the size of the trailers. They'll pull up on-street parking, we'll coordinate that time with them. It's a residential district, so they can't make deliveries before 7 o'clock. So in typically, we've, we do it now at our Mass Avenue store, we do it at Eggleston Square store, which we don't come into the parking lot, it's just coordinated so they're able to pull right up on sidewalk and drop their load and come inside with their load versus pulling up to a ship in a receiving area.
And this is an EDA. How do the plans look, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. Is the parking assigned residential, what prevents someone going to Dunkin' Donuts and parking in the parking lot?
Well, we, well, we will absolutely because we, we will not be a 24-hour or whatever. It will definitely be a permitted parking, so no one can park in a parking lot unless you have a permit. The, the restaurant, so therefore, we're not going to do assigned parking there, but our traffic, if you're not a customer there, then you won't be able to park in the parking lot. So someone pulling in that's going to spend the night parking there will be permitted, which will be the tenants. So the tenants will have a permit, so they'll be able to pull up and stay there. Anybody else will have to go.
What's, what are the hours of operation of Dunkin' Donuts?
Typically, what we try to do is we try to get an 11 o'clock permit, but then we don't open past about 9 o'clock because about 8 or 9 o'clock it dies down. If when we go to the CV and they say it's 9, we're fine with that, too. Usually, we try to get a window a little bit beyond so that we're not having someone say, oh, 9:01, you know, someone was in your store.
What time you open in the morning?
We open at 5 o'clock, sir.
Thank you.
And, Tim, this is an allowed use in an EDA?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the residential use is also an allowed use in the EDA?
That's correct.
Okay. Is anybody, any other questions from the board?
Have you selected a contractor for the project?
No, we haven't, sir. We're just, I'm getting the engineering, part of it done to go out and try to find. We're, we're committed to trying to use local contractors. We've been successful at that in the past and try to make sure that they're Boston residents, so we're just getting ready to hit that process after we get the approval from you folks.
Elevator goes all the way up to the roof deck, is that correct?
That, that is correct, yes.
And what is the height of the building?
It's at 55 feet.
And what's the roof deck? Is it accessible to all residents?
That is correct. It has two means of egress and an elevator for wheelchair accessibility.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support. This has gone through community process through DND as well as through our process and the community is in strong support for the economic development and as well as the housing component for this property.
Good afternoon, Terrence Moreau of the Mandrell Company. I do commercial and residential real estate within Dudley Square in Roxbury. I support Clayton in this project and I do believe that the community of Roxbury is needing a project like this as it grows. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin Brown from Counselor Tito Jackson's office, and he would like to give his support.
Good morning, members of the board. My name's Sonia Chang Diaz. For the record, State Senator representing the Parsonland question in Roxbury and beyond. Want to go on record in support of the project in general primarily because Waldwin Group and the Principal, Mr. Turnbull, is an extremely known developer, known party who has been a trusted and longstanding community partner on a, you know, a highly regular basis, invested in the Dudley neighborhood, doing walkthroughs, community betterment efforts. He's got genuine relationships in the community and I am confident that he's going to have ongoing ties of accountability to the neighborhood through those relationships. And in my experience, it's really hard to overvalue those, those ties of relationship and accountability. Also, he's made strong commitments to wealth building in communities of color in general as an employer and on this project specifically going on record of setting the goals of 60% MBE subcontractors and 70% minority workforce on the project. And finally, I think it's notable that this project is not seeking or relying upon any public subsidy for its financing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Reese Hardaway. I'm representing two, in two places. Organization Central Boston Elder Services, which is the largest employer in Roxbury, located at 2315. We have about 170 employees and unfortunately, our executive director couldn't be here today, but I'm here representing her. She is in full support of this project because it gives a lot of resources to the community. I'm also an owner of Final Touch Class Boutique, which is located at 17 Warren Street, and I'm in full support of this because Clayton employs many of the families and the youth in the area. Clayton is also one of the leaders of the Public Safety Walkthrough of Dudley Square. He walks with all the residents and the businesses to improve all the aspects of the, of the area and the town, so...
And what's your address, please?
17 Warren Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mayor Parrish, representative of the Carver District Union, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion, motion to approve with BRA Design Review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 5623306 Wambek Street. This is to extend the first-floor apartment living space into the basement, construct a new stair within the apartment basement, and demolishment of the basement kitchen. Violations Article 50, Section 29, excessive floor-to-air ratio. Additional living space must comply with the current building codes including fire protection. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, my name is Sullivan Spencer, 6 Wambek Street, Roxbury.
My name is Hazakiah Pratt, 454 Laurel Avenue, and the architect for the project assisting Mr. Spencer, who is the owner and also lived in the building as well.
So this is an extension into the basement?
Yes, it is.
Please tell us what that extension involves?
Well...
Is it a bedroom? Is it, what kind of spaces?
No bedroom. Presently, the, his intent is to currently, he currently lives on the first floor. His bedrooms are on the first floor. The extension involves building an internal stair to, to the basement for a family room, a den, and storage rooms as, as well. There are common areas that are accessible from the outside, however, the living space in the basement has two egress, the first, the new egress, which is the new stair going up to the first floor. There is an existing door, grade level, that exit out as, as well.
And how many square foot, feet is this altogether, this new addition?
The new addition, about 800 square feet.
Okay. How do the plans look, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. The reason that you here is to clear up a housing violation, is that...
Yes, it is.
Okay. So you're removing the separate unit from the basement?
Right, the separate unit with the kitchen that has been removed. Permit, short form permit was pulled, a demo permit to remove that as well.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support. They do have support of all the local butters and everything seems to be pretty straightforward with this project.
We'd also, there are letters of support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin Brown from Counselor Tito Jackson's office. The counselor would like to give his support, but I also just want to go on record and to state that Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, they said that they won't support the project just based on the violations.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? Mr. Pratt, you were saying something?
Yes, Mr. Spencer got support from his butters on Wambek and he also sort of overdid it. He went, he has about 50 other support letters from this around the streets as well. Initially, we were told that we were only required to get support from his butters and that's what he, that's what he did.
Thank you. Motion? I think we're right...
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 561622, 375 to 377 Blue Hill Avenue. This is to change of occupancy from a restaurant to bakery. No work on this permit, zoning only. Violation Article 50, Section 28, bakery use is a conditional use in the sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Claudia Griffin, Neighborhood Services will be doing translation for him. Que por favor les des su nombre y dirección?
Johnny Villal, 375 Blue Hill Avenue.
375 Blue Hill Ave. Su nombre?
Johnny Villal.
Johnny Villal.
I'm going to bring it up right now.
Please tell us what's being proposed?
Que lo que le está proponiendo hoy a los jueces? Cuál es su propuesta?
Mi, 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 la manera de la batería.
De qué?
De la bakery.
De la bakery, para hacer qué?
bizcocho, jugo dulce, panes.
He's applying to open a bakery at the, at such a location.
So is it a restaurant slash bakery? What is it?
Es un restaurante con panadería o específicamente una panadería?
No, no es panadería.
Restaurante con bakery or no?
Bakery.
Bakery.
Okay. And is it open already?
Ya está abierta.
Sí.
Yes, ma'am.
It is? What's the name?
De Johnny Bakery.
The Jonnies?
Una de Johnny Bakery.
The Jonnies Bakery.
The Jonnies Bakery, okay. Okay, and baking will occur on-site? Just kind of help, help me with this. Baking will occur on-site? Deliveries?
Va a cocinar dentro de la propiedad o va afuera?
Abento.
Inside the property.
Pardon?
Bakery will be, yes.
How do the plans look, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate.
Hey, any questions from the board?
So there won't be any work to be done? Will there be any work to be done if it's already operating, right?
Eh, algún trabajo, adiciones se va a ser en este momento o se va a estar como está?
Como está.
The way it is, sir.
No signage?
No, sir.
Nada va a cambiar?
No.
Nothing will change. Stay the same.
Not a problem. Did this used to be a Chinese restaurant?
Era antes es un restaurante japonés?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Kyra, you in support?
Yes, I am.
Please, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kyra Fox, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support. As just stated, this was a pre-existing restaurant in the past. Not much will be changing on the inside. They would just be changing the type of food that they will be offering the community.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin Brown from Counselor Jackson's office, and he would like to give his support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition?
Kyra, are there still grates on the, on the building?
Are there still grates on the outside? Yes.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BRA Design Review for signee ten.
And, and grates, okay? Is there a second?
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 580455, 772 to 778 Adams Street. This is to renovate an existing restaurant and building facade, increase capacity of the restaurant. Allow design capacity to 172 patrons. Violations Article 9, Section 2, extension of a non-conforming use from an 84-person to 172-person restaurant. And Article 65, Section 41, insufficient parking. Name and address for the record, please.
772 Adams Street.
Thank you, ma'am. I have some numbers here that I believe one was sent this morning from the Ashwin Adams and the Cedar Grove Civic Association. They've already privately sent them.
Please tell us what's being proposed. What's the name of the restaurant?
It's going to be Landmark Public House.
So this is a new restaurant?
Correct. It was Gerard's.
So it's, it was Gerard's, uh...
Correct.
Oh, okay, so it's Landmark...
It's going to be Landmark Public House.
Public House. And it's going from 84 to 172 seats?
Propose, correct.
Yes. Anything else other than that?
So there was an existing convenience store that we are going to keep, but we're going to condense that. We're taking about 500 square feet of that convenience store to use to add that to the restaurant. As far as the parking, we've mitigated that issue. We've addressed it with the neighborhood associations that are in support. We've made an agreement with the gas station across the street. They have about 40 spots they're going to allow us to use and designate to our restaurant specifically. The parking lot behind us, which allows two-hour parking, we've also had an agreement with them. We're working out the figures now as far as we're going to pay them per space. They have 200 spaces in their lot. We've also have a letter of an agreement with another business a block away to use as staff parking if needed, as extra space. They have 20 spots at that, at that business as well.
Is the entrance to the restaurant going to be through the convenience store like the other store?
No, it's going to, it's, no, the convenience store is going to be its own separate convenience store. The restaurant is staying, the same entrance is going to stay where it was, but that's going to be the main entrance of the restaurant.
So through the parking lot? Or through the convenience store?
Well, yeah, where the convenience store was, but it's not going to go through the convenience store anymore. It's going to go straight into the restaurant. The restaurant is staying, the same entrance is gonna stay where it was, but that's gonna be the main entrance of the restaurant.
So through the parking lot? Or through the convenience store?
Well, yeah, where the convenience store was, but it's not gonna go through the convenience store anymore. It's gonna go straight into the restaurant.
Okay, so it's gonna be the entrance there, okay?
Correct.
And these agreements, agreements are agreements. The use will be there. Is there any move to have those applicants come in so that there is ancillary parking being provided formally for this use?
I'm not sure, ma'am.
No. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. The neighborhood is very excited about the renovations and opening of this restaurant, and they have full neighborhood support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to also go on record in support. Again, there's been a very significant community process, and the community is very excited about the project.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ryan Spitz, on behalf of City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. We'd like to go on record and echo the comments of the Mayor's Office and the District Council's office, and go on record in strong support. Thank you.
Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Put a motion on the floor to accept the, the extension or the, accept the plans as is and with the design review from the BRA.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 584-546, 12 Everdeen Street. This is to renovate an existing two-family, new exterior siding, roofing, windows, porches, and interior layout and finishes.
Craig Galvin, Madam of the, um, Madam?
Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Is it just a?
Violation, Article 65.
Excuse me, for this one and the next one, did you say?
Correct.
Okay.
Violations Article 65, Section 9. Excessive floor-to-air ratio. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient front yard. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Stuart Schreier. I'm an attorney with an office at 1005 Dorchester Avenue in Dorchester. With me is Mr. Peter Walsh of 26 Clayton Street in Dorchester.
66 Road, Milton.
So, Mr. Schreier, tell us briefly what's being proposed?
This is an existing two-family house on the corner of Everdeen and Ashland Street. On that corner, six out of the ten houses are two families. This is an existing two. It's going to remain a two. The purpose is to remodel the two-family house, but they're gonna re-lay out the interior. They're gonna add two dormers on. The first floor, first of all, there'll be no living space in the basement. There may be a storage room in the basement, utilities in the basement, but there's no bedrooms or anything else in the basement. The first floor is going from a one-bedroom apartment to a two-bedroom apartment by reconfiguring the layout.
How many, how many square feet is that going to be?
Um, I, it wasn't on the plan, so I can't say. It looks like it's about eight hundred to a thousand.
Roughly eight hundred, Mr. Schreier.
Eight hundred?
Approximately eight hundred. It wasn't a figure on the plans, and I'm not gonna pretend to be an architect. So, the second floor is also be reconfigured, as is the third floor, and that's gonna be one apartment on the second and third, and that is gonna be a three-bedroom apartment. So we're gonna have a two-bedroom apartment on the first floor, a three-bedroom apartment on the second and third. What triggered the violations here is the addition of two dormers, and the dormers are going to increase the actual floor area ratio because once you put those dormers on, then more of the attic space becomes usable.
And what will the dormer space be used for?
Uh, bedrooms.
For bedrooms?
There are currently three bedrooms in the attic. That's gonna be reduced to two, but they're gonna be larger and nicer bedrooms with actual, an actual room for a bathroom on the third floor. So there'll be a master bedroom, a secondary bedroom on the third floor, instead of three very tiny unusable.
And these are gonna be full dormers?
Yes.
So it's an additional, essentially another floor?
No, this floor is there, and there are three bedrooms up there now.
No, I'm saying, okay.
But they're, but they're really, you know, the kind of bedrooms where you have to duck your head, and they're good for kids' rooms. Now there'll be adult rooms.
Mr. Pizzani, how are the plans?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. We had an abutters meeting on site that was attended by approximately five abutters. They all expressed support. The current state of the house is, is pretty rough, and they're all happy that it's being renovated and will be nice. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ryan Spitz, on behalf of City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 573-073, 11 Wenlock Road. This is to confirm occupancy as a one-family dwelling and combine parcels, combine parcels ninety-two, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-seven thou, nine thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet, then subdivide to have a lot known as 11 Wenlock, and then create a new lot at 13 Wenlock Road. This is to be known as 11 Wenlock Road. Violations Article 65, Section 9. Insufficient minimum lot area. Name and address for the record, please.
Edward Hearn, 6 Wenlock Road, Dorchester, Mass. What we're, we're proposing to put an additional single family on the lot to the left of it and subdivide the existing lot, which is ninety-six hundred and twenty square feet.
So basically, I'm trying to do the math here. So, so you're gonna combine two parcels. The parcel with the single family on it already will have three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet?
That's correct.
And you're proposing, is this a proposal for new construction at thirteen?
The new construction will be as of right on thirteen.
The new construction is as of right. So you're now creating a non-conforming lot at number eleven.
Correct.
Okay. So what is the zoning, zoning?
It's 1F 5,000, and the floor-to-air ratio on the existing building would be point four three.
Point four three?
Four three, yes.
Okay, so basically, you have a very substandard lot here.
Well, the, the average house on the, I actually live across the street as well, but the average house on the street is all on small lots.
So it's a 1F 5,000, okay.
Overall, it's three hundred and twenty square feet short of the ten thousand square feet that would be required to be two lots.
How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Uh, well, the only plan before us is really the subdivision plan.
That's correct.
Because the building is as of right.
So the new building is as of right, but then it creates all the violations on the old building?
That's right.
On the current building.
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. We held an abutters meeting on site that was attended by approximately eight abutters and neighbors. They all expressed their full support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGeckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to also go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ryan Spitz, on behalf of City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. We'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here in opposition? One question. Is that parking being provided at eleven?
Yes, there is. There's, there's no parking allowed on the street at all, so you have to have off-street parking. It's a very small street.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 560-246, 2 Garfield Avenue. There is a companion case, BOA 560-243, 820 to 822 Truman Parkway. This is in conjunction with erecting new rear stair and add the street parking. This is one of two buildings on the same lot. Violation of Article 9, Section 1. Extension of non-conforming use. And for 820 to 822 Truman Parkway, this is to erect a new two-family building with garages, side decks, and off-street parking. This is one of two buildings on the same lot. Violation of Article 29, Section 4. Green Belt Protection Overlay District applicability. Article 69, Section 9. Front yard is insufficient. Article 69, Section 30.12. Two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 69, Section 8. Forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, William Foley, Walterton, Mass.
Tim Johnson, Architect, 190 Old Colony Ave, Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board. This 21,000-square-foot lot is on the corner of Garfield Ave and Truman Parkway and contains an existing two-family dwelling. An earlier proposal for this site included demolishing the existing two-family and erecting four single-family dwellings, consuming the site and opposed by the abutters. The scheme before you is also for dwelling units. However, we are renovating the two-family on Garfield Ave and erecting a new two-family on Truman Parkway, thus preserving sixty percent of the forest cover on the site. Lastly, the new units will be three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, 2,000 square feet with two-car garages. Access to the site via Garfield Ave. We received favorable, favorable support from our neighborhood meeting, and I have a list of signatures in support of the project.
Okay. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. David McNulty, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant is met with the community, received some support from the abutters. We feel like this plan, particularly versus the last proposal, is a much better plan. Allows for open space, proper parking. The renovation of the existing two-family is a benefit, and the situation where the new two-family they're proposing situates, helps in a perfect spot to maximize the open space on the lot. So we'd be recorded in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Applewhite, Council McCarthy's office. The counselor had some concerns, and the applicant did sit down, and he'd like to go on record as supporting this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jessica Roigas, Council at Large, Neuse Society George office, and we also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chairman, members of the board. Morning. My name is Steve Benetwell. I live at 6 Garfield Avenue, High Park. I've been there about fourteen years, on and off in the street for the last forty years. My property directly abuts the, the project there. I am in favor of the project for a number of reasons. One, I think it will improve the quality of the neighborhood, which I mean, the lot that they want to develop has been a garbage magnet for tires and trash, and I believe that if there's a house on the property, they won't be dumping anything in their front yard. And they, we've had a water problem drainage in the back of the houses there, and I've seen the plans, and they, they assured me that this would be taken care of, so it'd be proper drainage, so our basements don't flood out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? Will this be stick-built?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Motion, please?
Motion for approval of BRA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
On the rediscussions for 11:30, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the rediscussions? Case, calling BOA 568-216, 1869 High Park Avenue. This is to erect a single-family home. Violation of Article 69, Section 9. Section 68.9, insufficient lot area. Article 69, Section 9. Section 68.9, insufficient lot width. Article 69, Section 8. Section 9. Section 68.9, insufficient lot frontage. Article 69, Section 9. Excessive floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9. Insufficient rear yard, open deck. And Article 69, Section 25. Design review and guidelines. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Mulgeny, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree. And with me today is Joe DiCipio, who is the developer of this proposal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This project at 1869 High Park Ave is a lot adjacent to 1865 High Park Avenue. The proposal calls for the construction of a 2,200-square-foot house and a 5,000-square-foot lot. This area was rezoned in 2012, going from 1F 5,000 to 1F 6,000. The proposal will have four bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths, two parking spots. They're all off-street. And with respect to the violations that the secretary just read, all of those violations relate to the lot size where it changed from 6,000 to 5,000.
And can you please tell us why this design review slash guidelines was cited?
So, the, there were a few things. On the floor-to-air ratio initially had been called out as a violation. However, it was not a violation. The, it was point five, and actually it's point four-four.
Yeah, so what is the design review guideline, section 69, Section 25?
It's, it's, it's across the street from Meggs Field in Reedville.
Oh, I see, because it's up the parks.
Exactly.
Okay.
As far?
Go ahead. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. David McNulty, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the community. There was an abut that had some concerns, as well as a neighbor down the street. However, the proposal is in line with everything else on the street. In fact, there are many multi-unit houses right on their block. However, these, this applicant is looking to build a single-family on a 5,000-square-foot lot. Entire grid, even though Zone 6,000 is mostly 5,000-square-foot lots, there have been three, four, maybe five houses approved in the last three or so years by this board, all single families, all support from the Mayor's Office. So, you know, to be consistent, we're gonna go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Walter?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Applewhite, District 5. City Council, Tim McCarthy's office, would like to go on record as supporting.
Is anybody in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval of BRA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 583-498, 154 to 160 Green Street. This is to change owner licensing and certification, certificate of inspection for a restaurant-cafe with takeout. Violation of Article 6, Section 4. Change of a previous decision of the Board of Appeal, other condition or necessary protection. Name and address for the record.[1516.12]
Two eighty-three Chestnut Avenue, number one Jamaica Plain.
Tell us what's being proposed?
Yeah, we purchased a business at one five four Green Street, formerly known as Cafe Bartlett Square. We would like to change the name to La Rana Rosa. So, this required a new certificate of inspection, which had the proviso takeout granted to this petitioner only. So, we are applying to have that proviso changed to our name. So, it's a brand-new certificate of inspection.
Are you familiar with the takeout provisos in the city?
I'm sorry, say again?
You're familiar with the takeout provisos in the city?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And what's the name of this place again?
The new name will be La Rana Rosa.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
They're very good, they're adequate. So, you also have the Blue Frog, right?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
What kind of restaurants can it be?
Well, basically, we're the same kind of business throughout the day. And then, at night, we'll be selling pizza. So, we just added on that at the nighttime. But it's quick service, like it used to be.
Bakery café in the morning.
And you're not doing any significant renovations to the space?
None whatsoever. We painted the walls.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Julianne Doherty, Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record of strong support of this application. The applicants are staples in the Jamaica Plain community. They're fine business owners. They're really going to add value to the section of Green Street. They also give back all the time to the local Jamaica Plain community. They've gone through a significant community process and have earned support, as well as what Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council is owning.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Andrew Valdezon from the Office of City Councilor Matt O'Malley. I would like to go on record and support this proposal.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Jessica Rodriguez from City Councilor at Large, New Society George Office. And we would also like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries or all set?
Calling BOA five seven one one zero three sixty-five Green Street. This is to erect a new building for nine dwelling units and nine parking spaces. Violation is Article fifty-five, Section forty. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section eight. Multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty-five, Section nine. Lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, Section nine. Height is excessive. Article fifty-five, Section nine. Usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine. Front yard, existing building alignment. Article fifty-five, Section nine. Rear yard insufficient. And Article fifty-five, Section forty. Off-street parking designed. Name and address for the record, please.
Lee Goodman, one eleven Perkins Street, Jamaica Plain.
Dartania Brown, architect and bark, sixty K Street, Boston.
Jeff Goodman, two twenty-five La Martine Street, Jamaica Plain.
Madam Chairwoman, Members of the Board. Just to give a brief overview of the project, it started about five years ago with a different development team and architect. We came in about a year ago to revise the plans and work with the community. Since then, it has been revised substantially. It went from five stories to four stories and now to three stories. Through neighborhood outreach, there was a lot of feedback regarding facade changes, density, changes.
Can you please talk to us, so is it still nine dwelling units?
It is.
Is it still nine parking spaces?
It is.
What is the zoning in this district? Because the use is forbidden, so what's the zoning in this district?
Three-family.
It's a three-family and you're proposing nine-family?
Correct.
What is the parking requirement and what are you proposing?
The parking requirement is one point two-five and we're proposing one space per unit.
One point two-five and you're proposing one?
Correct.
Okay, and what's the design? Because one of your violations is parking design. What is triggering that?
The reason that is being triggered is because we are utilizing a lift system where you drive in and drops you down, and that triggers a loading zone violation. But it's just because the lift.
Because of the lift instead of a ramp.
Correct.
Because of what? I'm sorry?
Instead of putting in a traditional ramp, we're using a mechanized lift to access the garage. That's how we're able to get the nine spaces.
What's the time cycle required for?
It's about sixty seconds. It's a company called Klaus Parking. We're looking at them quite a bit.
So, sixty seconds physical moving time. Car is on the ground, basement floor. You drive into the lift, sixty seconds, pop.
Yep.
Then you drive out.
Correct.
The issue then is the car queuing on Green Street. How is that? Is there parking? There's parking on your side of the street, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess one of the questions is, is there sufficient standing?
Queuing.
Well, there's another garage, so there's two garage doors. One is the at-grade handicap accessible spot. So, I guess in theory, you could then double park in front of that if there was a queuing issue.
And we are actually working with the neighbors. The thing about the car lift is when you come back out, you're actually going to head out head-first, which is a nice thing we found. Neighbors appreciated that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, the height. So, the height, are you now meeting the requirement?
So, the require, the height is thirty-five. Our building is thirty-eight, and that's predicated by the use of the car lift to get the overrun. That bumped us up to three feet.
Okay, and what's the FAR?
The FAR is, sorry, let me describe it, one point eight-nine.
And a three-family, it's usually one point, is point eight?
Point six.
Point six?
Point six, correct.
Okay. And you have roof decks?
Private roof decks.
Private to which?
To the upper, to the upper unit, the upper three units.
Upper three units?
Yep.
Okay.
And access is by hatch?
By hatch within the unit. No common access.
Thank you.
Okay. How do the plans look, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are very nice.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Julianne Doherty, Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to go on record of support of the application with two provisos that truly seek to eliminate any concerns, outstanding concerns of the direct abutters. The first is that the bumped-out bay on the second, third floors be pulled six inches from the sideline so that the exterior wall is approximately eight feet from the Albert Street side. Second is a shed enclosure with roof be constructed on the same side for temporary storage of rubbish. I wanted to point out that the applicants and the development team, as well as even the existing owners, have gone through a significant community process, truly listened to all concerns from the community. It was a truly robust community process. They've earned tons of support from not only the local community, but surrounding community as well, and have gone through the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council zoning as well. So, we are on record of support with those provisos. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Andrew Valdezon from the Office of City Councilor Matt O'Malley. He'd like to go on record in support of this project, just echoing the provisos that the mayor's office has laid out. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Brad Brown. I live at two eighty-three Chestnut Avenue and I'm at a butter. I also own the Blue Frog Bakery at three Green Street and co-owner of La Rana Rosa at one fifty-four Green Street. We are in favor of this development. Thank you.
I'm not that familiar with the lift mechanisms. Like, with any mechanical system, there's potential problems of failure. What happens if it fails and someone is trying to get out or get in? Is there?
The system essentially is like an escalator or an elevator run, you know, by a typical public agency. Since we're creating the condo and the condo fees, we will require that monthly service be instituted, and there'll be an on-service call, just like Delta Elevator or someone like that, if there's a problem.
Do you want to name an address on the record?
No.
No?
I'm at a butter.
Are you speaking in support or in opposition?
Well, I was hoping for some more green space in front. I have a deck that directly is blocked by the building.
Okay.
And I did send in a letter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We have the letter. Thank you. And please, for the record, just put in the sizes of the units.
The size of the units range from nine hundred and twenty square feet up to fifteen hundred and twenty on the first floor. And then, on the third floor, we have a sixteen hundred and eighty-five square-foot unit and another unit at twelve hundred and forty and another unit at nine ninety-five. So, it's really a mix between nine twenty to sixteen eighty-five.
And these are one-twos and threes?
Twos and threes.
Okay. Okay, given all the testimony, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval of B.R.A. design review.
Second.
For screening and for design?
Yes.
Is there, is a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries or all set?
Thank you.
BOA five seven six two zero three forty-four Grayton Road. This is to extend living space into the attic via a proposed shed dormer in accordance with plan submitted for a two-family dwelling. A violation is Article nine, Section one. Reconstruction, extension of a non-conforming building in two F and a one F sub-district. Article fifty-six, Section eight. Residential sub-district dimensional number of stories has been exceeded. Article fifty-six, Section eight. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-six, Section eight. Insufficient side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Dillon, forty-four Grayton Road, West Roxbury.
Tell us what you're proposing.
Madam Chair and Members of the Board, I'm the owner of the family-owned, two-family occupant, or two-family home on West Roxbury. My mother's on the first floor. My family's on the second floor. Due to our expanding family, we'd like to move into the attic space for a master bed or master suite. The condition of the roof is deteriorating so much that the work needs to be done and we'd rather maximize living space.
Mr. Pizzani, how are the plans?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Chris Ross from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support. This project came before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council and all of Mike's neighbors in the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council were all in support. Thank you.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Bill McGregor, City Councilor Matt O'Malley. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Bill McGregor, City Councilor Matt O'Malley. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Jessica Rodriguez from Council at Large, New Society George Office. And we would also like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval of B.R.A. design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries or all set?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members.
Calling BOA five seven zero one eight five fifty-nine Duennell Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a one-family, first-floor addition adjoining bedroom to situate above dining room and intended use for home office space. The violation is Article fifty-six, Section eight. Front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Brian Dellen. My address is fifty-nine Duennell Street, West Roxbury. So, we're proposing to build an addition, second-floor addition over our sunroom. It's a front entrance colonial. I believe we had a pre-existing condition that was, you know, created our violation. We're not increasing the footprint of the house. We're just building on top of our sunroom.
Square feet is that?
It's going to be a hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Chris Ross from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. This project was unanimously approved by the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. It's in line with all the other houses on that street, so, thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Bill McGregor, City Councilor Matt O'Malley. The council would also like to go on record in support, please.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Jessica Rodriguez, Council at Large, New Society George Office. And we would also like to go on record and support.
So, this is a home office? You will not see clients in there?
That's right.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries or all set?
Thank you.
BOA five seven seven six four five eighteen seventy-two to eighteen seventy-six Center Street. This is an outdoor patio in the rear with three tables, plant trees under six feet high. Violation is Article fifty-six, Section fifteen. Accessory outdoor is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Muriya Morales, and it's eighteen seventy-six Center Street.
Tell us what you're proposing.
So, I, we opened a coffee shop a year and a half ago, and in the back part of our coffee shop, there is a space. And we're proposing to build a patio so that we can put outdoors sitting.
What's the name of the coffee shop?
Recreo Cafe.
Where on Center Street? What's the cross street?
Sorry?
What is the cross street?
Hayson and Center Street.
Okay. And are there residences behind you?
On this, on Hayson Street, yes. And there is a, there is a storage building in between the patio and that first residential building. So, there is a, you know, a structure that separates it.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Hold on, Mr. Pizzani?
Were they written up for fence height in excess of six feet?
No.
Because there's a note that they want an eight-foot fence.
No, they was changed to six feet, the normal ones.
Okay, so we have that on record as a six-foot fence?
Is this next to the Real Deal?
Yes.
In West Roxbury?
Okay.
And I have letters from customers of support.
Sure. Are you speaking in support?
Yes.
Sorry, it's taking me a while to gather my thoughts here. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Chris Ross from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. This went through the proper neighborhood process, lots of support from the direct abutters and from the community at large. I believe there, it's the, it used to be the Ice Cream Works. It's right next to the Real Deal. But we would like to support this application. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Bill McGregor, City Councilor Matt O'Malley. The council would also like to go on record in support. We also, they went in front of West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which supported them. The West Roxbury Main Streets Director was unable to attend today, and he just wants to express his support as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Jessica Rodriguez, Council at Large, New Society George Office. And we would also like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Tom McDonough, Department of Neighborhood Development. I was asked by the, by the director, executive director of West Roxbury Main Streets to come over and raise our support.
Thank you. It's good to see you, wearing a different hat here today.
Yes, exactly. It's good to be back here.
I can get a quick question for you. Is it at the back of the building?
It is.
So, is the access through the front? No access to the back, though?
There are access.
So, when they come into your coffee shop, they can only access from coming through your coffee shop? They can't access through Hayson Street, correct?
No. It would be blocked.
So, is it blocked off by the fence?
Yes.
Okay. And the neighbors behind it didn't have an issue?
No.
What's your hours of operation?
It's, we open at seven, close at five.
Okay. Thank you.
Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries or all set? Thank you.
Calling BOA five seven six two six two four seventeen to four thirty-two Cambridge Street, four thirty-three, apologize. This is, this is a new patio area for outdoor dining for existing restaurant. Violation is Article nine, Section two. Nonconforming uses with a shared lot proposed for an outdoor seating. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six. Off-street parking requirements conditional due to the elimination of an existing parking spaces. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Karen Semayo, McDermott, Quintian Miller. Twenty-eight State Street, Suite eight oh two, Boston.
Arthur Chu, One Billings Road, Architect for the Project.
Justin Dalton, Main, Brooklyn, Cambridge Street, Austin, Mass.
Please tell us what's being proposed.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Interestingly enough, we worked with Mr., I mean, over two years ago to get this restaurant open. He is only seeking at this time to add some outdoor seating. I will tell you that when we originally did the work for the restaurant, the restaurant was then and is today and allowed use at this address. We did not require any zoning relief at that time for either a nonconforming use or for parking. So, I just want the record to reflect we're a bit confused as to the violations, and despite efforts to point that out, we're still here. And we were told our recourse was to come here, as we did not agree with the position of the examiner in this case.
What is the name of the restaurant?
Luluz, Austin.
Pardon?
Luluz, Austin.
Okay. And so, this is a request for outdoor seating? Is this rear, rear yard seating?
It is in the, it's in the rear of the building, yes.
How many, how many seats?
Plus or minus sixty seats.
Sixty?
Yes.
Okay, and tell us what, what was the parking there? Was that one space? How many space?
There was no, there was no parking there, but I will let one of these two gentlemen amp up on that.
I could say that, it was, before we took over the spot, it was a used car dealership next to us. It was their overflow car lot. So they would put their unsold vehicles back behind our restaurant, basically.
So, but you're basically increasing your capacity. There's a capacity increase. What's the current capacity, then?
One seventeen.
Inside, that's correct.
Right, so it's increased to one seventy-seven.
Total capacity, correct. When we're dealing with the outdoor seating, typically, and everyone on the board knows how restaurants operate, when the weather is nice, people really don't want to be sitting inside. So for all intents and purposes, the activity moves outside, and that's why we're here. It's to try to ensure that this business can survive in the climate. But it is an increase in capacity, that's correct. However, as an allowed restaurant use, if I were increasing the capacity of the inside of the restaurant, if it's an allowed use, it's an allowed use. So I'm not, again, we're here and we'll do what the board wishes.
But given the fact that you're here, we just need to do our due diligence. What are the abutting uses that might be affected by this outdoor seating?
There are no abutting uses that would be negatively, in any way negatively impacted by this. It's commercial area.
There are a few three families across the street behind the building. But when we met with the Neighborhood Association and also the Butters meeting, we had no objections raised. The only concern was, I wonder what, what, closing hours.
Which we agreed to eleven, based on that community outreach.
Okay.
Maybe I missed this, but what is the current use of the space?
It's a restaurant. Oh, in the rear?
Yeah.
There's, it was being used by, on an at-will basis, a used parking, used car lot would store their unused vehicles or vehicles that needed repair in this area. So it was not used for parking for this restaurant or for any commercial uses or residents in that area.
Was it being leased to that entity?
It was being leased on an at-will basis, so really not, not any long-term lease.
So that area behind you is the same ownership as the restaurant space?
The landlord, correct. We do not own the building, we're just the tenant, correct. Correct.
Arthur, can you describe the structure that's being proposed?
It's actually just a fenced-in area for outside seating.
And there is a wooden pergola. What is the height of the wooden pergola?
It's an Hobsy.
How high?
Eight feet.
Eight feet to the inside.
And for how many seats would be in the...
Sixty, for the outdoor seating.
Six zero.
Six zero, yes.
Does the pergola have a roof, either temporary or...
Plan is kind of a, for roll-back bonding in case of light rain or too intensive sunshine. But that's just, nothing, no wooden top or anything on those sides.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tomas Gonzalez from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We held the Butters meeting. There were no objections from any of the neighbors. They run a fine establishment for the last two years. This space is huge in terms of the parking in the rear that they're using for the outdoor space. And to sort of separate, there is a great difference between the parking lot or the space behind the building and where the used car lot was. So in order to actually go up or down, you need to go down a set of stairs. So it's clearly sort of delineated between the two sides. And so, you know, we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Kevin McLaughlin from Councilor Cialmo's office. We are also in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez, Council at Large Neuse Society George Office, and we're also in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? Is, um... So is that space going to be handicapped accessible?
Yes.
It is? Okay. Given all that information, a motion, please?
March for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And this is, with the understanding that the space will close at eleven PM?
The outdoor space?
Yes.
Correct.
Calling next case...
Go ahead. The motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 572-276, twelve Athol Street. This is to extend living space into the basement. Violation to Article fifty-one, Section nine, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. George, this also to correct the violation?
Pardon me?
It also says to correct the violation.
There's a stop-work order. So that's referring to an inspector's violation notice, Mr. Fortune.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moransky. I'm an attorney with the business address at three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent the property owner, Danny McGauley, who is in the hearing room. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. McGauley and his family, they own this and live, reside in this three-family dwelling. Some time ago, he undertook a complete renovation of the building, all three units. He proceeded to extend that renovation into the basement, unaware that he would be incurring a floor-to-air ratio violation. That is the violation notice of which Mr. Fortune spoke. The inspector issued a stop-work order, required him to file a long-form application and seek relief from this board. The, um, the plan calls for an extension of living space for the first-floor unit into the basement. The plans that are on record with the board, which were filed with the permit application, depict a bedroom in the basement and an area that my client intended as a wet bar. I was, although not representing Mr. McGauley at the time, present at the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association hearing where he presented his proposals. There was no opposition to extension of living space to the basement, but there was concern about the bedroom being down there and what appeared to some people to be potentially a kitchen. The concern was that this could potentially, at some point, become an independent unit, which my client never intended it to be. However, in response to those concerns, he agreed at the BIA meeting to not put a bedroom in the basement and certainly agreed that there would not be any kitchen down there.
So what will the space be used for?
It's just, it's simply additional space for his family. He's keeping the first-floor unit. So it would just be recreational space, living space in the basement, but no bedroom and certainly no kitchen. It would be about an eight-hundred-square-foot addition of the living space in the basement area.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling?
I have to refer to the...
The drawings are seven foot six.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. I've excised the word "bedroom" from the plan. And there is no kitchen shell down there. Just a living room, bathroom.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Tomas Gonzalez from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We conducted the Butters meeting. He had good support from his abutting neighbors. He was clear about the fact that he wasn't making this into a bedroom, that he has a growing family, college-age children, that he's looking to make sure that they stay in the area. And we felt that everything that he had done to the project was satisfactory up to this point.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Kevin McLaughlin from Councilor Cialmo's office. We would also like to go in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jessica Rodriguez, Council at Large Neuse Society George Office, and we also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition? Motion, please?
March for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you. Calling BOA 580-493-10 BELLYMEY STREET. The scope of the project is a vestibule lobby addition to an existing sealed nursing facility. Violation to Article nine, Section one, and its extension of a nonconforming use.
Could you name an address for the record, please?
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brian Donahue, Architect, twenty-one McGrath Highway in Quincy.
Patrick Sheehan, seven seventy-six Worcester Street, Boston.
Tell us what's being proposed.
We're proposing a three-hundred-and-twenty-two-square-foot entry vestibule and lobby extension to the existing nursing facility. Right now, the lobby is open to the weather, so when you come in, there's no airlock. So we're providing a new vestibule for energy conservation and to give us a little bit more space.
What's the name of this nursing facility?
Presentation Rehab and Skilled Care Facility, right.
And there's no parking turnaround or anything in there? It's just open space at this point?
Basically, an open courtyard, not visible to any neighbors in the area.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Tomas Gonzalez from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. The actual project would not only increase the functionality of the space, but at the same time provide protection for those coming in and out of the facility. It's going to modernize the look, and it's actually absolutely needed, especially on the cold winter days. There's a person who sits right out front that needs to be protected from the climate. And this would go a long way to do that, both for the residents and the staff there. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Kevin McLaughlin from Councilor Cialmo's office, and we are also in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
I'll go to the rediscussions. Calling BOA 579-055, forty Auburn Street. This work is being done to here to finish the existing basement, demo, and slab roughly twenty-four inches. Violation is eighth edition, seventy-eight CMR, emergency escape and rescue. Window sill height exceeds forty-four inches above finished floor. Name and address for the record, please.
Adam Finkel. I'm a homeowner at forty Auburn Street, Charlestown.
So please, tell us what you're proposing. Tell us why you would defer it and what has changed since that deferral.
So I am proposing finishing my basement to add a living and den space, to add some more play space. And since we're expecting a second child, it's kind of crucial that we get it. Otherwise, we may have to move out of our current home. So it's going to be pretty much as one open room with a full bathroom. Roughly seven hundred and fifteen total square feet will be added, and it's within my allowed FAR ratio. And my issue, as you see, is the window sill is forty-four inch, or more than forty-four inches once we dig down the slab. So to mitigate this as best as possible, I've brought with me a new set of plans that shows a three-foot landing with, that'll be a foot off the ground. So, I'm sorry, can I get this to you? Oh, no, you can have it. So there's a new, there's going to be a three-foot landing platform that'll be twelve inches off the ground that will allow the window sill to then be forty-four inches off the slab height, or height of forty-four inches. The other issue that I run into, though, when I build the twelve-inch platform is that my head height, once I stand on the platform, is six foot four inches, when it should be six foot eight inches by code. So I need that four-inch variance, basically. And since it's an old house in the nineteen, built in nineteen hundreds, there's no other thing I can do to mitigate this.
How large is that platform?
Say again?
How large is that?
It's a three-foot platform per code rules, and it's going to be twelve inches off the ground.
So it's three feet, so the rest of the room is in conformance?
Yes.
Okay.
Three feet square.
Three feet square and twelve inches off the ground, yeah.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. Yeah, you know, this is... It's a good solution to...
If, I, just so you know as well, I do have a driveway, and I looked into trying to dig out to the driveway, but I couldn't because it was so narrow that I would lose my driveway. I looked into trying to go out the rear of my house. My house is built onto a hill, and the property behind me is that large armory building in Charlestown that they just redid. And I don't own any piece of land more than an inch behind my house. So I can't do that either. So this is the only option, unfortunately.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I do have, if you don't mind, because I wasn't aware of the neighborhood process because it was just a building issue, but I was called yesterday by your office, and I just got a letter from a Director Butter. I just wanted to submit.
So this is just building code. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you. Calling BOA 547-192, forty-six Mystic Street. There also, building code, BOA 547-193-46MISTICSTREET. Assist to build a new wall, cover upstairs by eight-by-five, new entrance door and new bath, install bathroom and legalize unit one, increase living space into the basement. The building code is Section one oh one, point four, point ten. Electrical reference to International Electrical Code shall be considered reference in Massachusetts tenants' access to buildings and electrical meters. Panel is not through a common passage. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson and the rest of the board. My name is Ryan Sadeen. I am at Twenty Park Plaza, Suite five oh five. And with me is my client, Carrie Silva, of forty-six Mystic Street, Unit one.
Okay, so, since there is a building code, code question, as is normal with our process, please address that, and then we will get to the, to the zoning issues.
Okay. The building, the code issue arose out of a renovation done in December of two thousand and eleven. And that renovation involved, if I may stand, I can just show you. This is forty-six Mystic, Unit one. This is the first floor, living room, kitchen, dining room, and a common hall and a bath. And then, these are the original plans from two thousand and three, when the condominium was created. And this is, my client, Miss Silva's basement, a bedroom, a study, a closet, and a hall. And you see, the utility room is existing at that time, as well as a bedroom and a study in the basement.
So the utility room is, is embedded within the unit?
That's correct.
There is no common access to it?
That is, that is correct.
And was this conversion, did that conversion need to come to this board? Or was it as of right, as a right process?
That conversion was, it's a good question. In, in our position, it was as of right. We, there is only one certificate of occupancy as of nineteen ninety. Between nineteen ninety to two thousand and three, there's no filing with the ISD that the prior owner, Mr. Tovia, ever sought permitting to do a utility room like that. So it is our position that we request leniency from the board that inherited this situation. My client, the unit owner, and the other unit owner should not be unfairly penalized for having to undergo construction to remodel the utility room as is. There is a condominium master specific easement for the Unit two and Unit three owners that they are given an easement, that is a right that goes with the land. It is applicable to all success...
Do they have keys to the unit in the case of an emergency?
They do not. They always communicate with Unit one owner, my client, who always grants access. And this situation has worked since two thousand and three without any issues amongst any of the owners. To impose upon the unit owners to do remodeling, it's burdensome for them. And this is a special circumstance where the prior condominium owner, he created this, this issue. And the unit owners of present day shouldn't have to pay for his misdeeds. This is something they inherited. It has worked well up till this point. And my client, as well as the other unit owners, are requesting exception in this case.
And as I say at every meeting, that, you know, what the relief that we, that we grant does not go with the people, it goes with the, with the building. So it will be something that goes on in perpetuity. So we just want everybody to be aware of that. Mr. Pizzani?
Yeah, I noticed that the plan of the utility room shows a window on the rear, issue of the rear yard. Why not just put a door from the rear yard?
There was, that wouldn't grant access to the other two unit owners. There's a, if I, if I may, I have pictures of the actual utility room.
Who has access to the rear yard?
I believe all unit owners have access to the rear yard.
Yes.
So all unit owners have access to the rear yard? If there is a door from the rear yard into the utility room, problem solved.
Wait, they, they don't have access to Miss Silva's patio?
They don't have, they have access through different alleys, and then you go to my property. They don't have access onto my patio. So my patio serves just for Unit one.
What's so special about the patio? I mean, it's a patio on break.
Okay, so the...
Look, there's a very easy solution. Put a rear door in to the...
So looking at the building code issue, may I have a motion, then?
Motion to deny the building code relief because there's a design solution to the problem.
Okay, is there a second?
If I may. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
With respect, if a cut-in of a door would cut into a wall on her unit, and it's not a, it'd be a...
This, this, this is a decision that we have made. You can appeal it to the state if you'd like. But now let's go on to the core zoning issue that's attached to it, okay? So please tell us why you're here on that.
Okay. Well, that's, that's a renovations issue where my client's general contractor undertook renovations, failed to get permitting for it in large because he knew of this utility room issue. And we're trying to remedy it now with going before the board and pleading for leniency on having to alter the utility room. Because what we've been told by ISD is until the utility room issue is solved, they're not going to improve the renovations, which, which was putting in a downstairs bathroom in the basement and remodeling the hallway so that there is more room from my client's unit into the common area hallway.
So this is an extension, so does your client own the first unit and it's extended into the basement?
That's correct.
And what's the use in the basement?
The use in a basement is a bedroom, a study, and a bathroom.
So it's a bedroom, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
That is a good question. Yeah, I do not, I do not know that question offhand, Madam Chairperson.
Okay. Mr. Pizzani, any, do the plans reveal any of that information?
The drawings do not show floor-to-ceiling heights. They should.
Can you reach the ceiling when you stand on the floor? You can't. Our concern is that this, maybe a building code issue would place it in a space that it may not read code. It should be seven feet six inches.
I will say, I purchased the unit, doesn't fit this now.
But the thing is, there may be a building code issue as far as height, because of the basement wouldn't.
I'm five-five, and I can't reject.
When ISD did examine it, they did.
I was worried you were going to say you could read it.
When ISD did examine it, they did not.
Did not read it. Okay. So, Mr. Pizzani, how are the plans as far as the use of that space? Bedroom, study, and bathroom?
Well, the plan does not show a bathroom. At least the plan that I have. Excuse me, no. There's a revised plan that shows, yep, shows a bathroom, office, bedroom.
Is any, any further questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Breen, Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor handled this case. He has a written statement stating that we feel that this matter is best left up to the decision of the board. The Office of Neighborhood Services held at a butters meeting in regards to this proposal on February 2nd, and it was well attended. During the course of the meeting, most of the discussion focused on the fact that the work had been done without permits over a year ago, as well as a discussion over who would pay for the work, condo documents, and a number of other concerns that while they may be related, do not bear relevance to the zoning code. There was a number of directive butters who were in attendance and supported the work being done. While there were a number of people there also in opposition, the majority were not directive butters and did not necessarily live in Charlestown. Because the discussion at this meeting was, despite the request of Neighborhood Services, focused almost exclusively on condo documents, trustees, and whether the work had been done with or without permits, our office believes this decision should be left up to the board to look at the merits of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak in support? Is anybody here in opposition? Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I have two letters, one from unit owner Jenna Ryu, which your office should have, and another one from Ms. Amy Smith, who's another co-unit owner.
Okay, thank you. Given the facts of the case.
Can I determine the whole building?
Three, Mr. Chair.
Given the facts of the case, may I have the motion on?
I can make a motion to grant the zoning relief requested. Now, the problem is that we're still in blocks because we denied the building code. So you're going to have to come to terms with that.
And so there's no building code relief in the sense of the height of the floor to ceiling height?
No, I mean, my sense is that a five-foot-five person with arm raised would extend it on seven feet.
Okay. Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Okay?
Calling BOA 553-106, 489 to 49, 489 East Broadway. This is to add one parking space at the rear of the building at 489 East Broadway with access from Silver Street. The violation is Article 57, Section 12. Proposed parking spaces reduces the open space to less than the required by Article 57 Table D for a five-story building with four residential units. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark LaCass, LaCass Law, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, Mass. I represent the applicant in this case.
Please tell us what is being proposed?
The proposal is to create one parking space behind a five-story building which contains four residential units and street-level retail space at 489 East Broadway. The parking space would be on the rear of the building, which is off Silver Street, a narrow one-way street that has no parking on either side of the street. So this would result in a net gain of one off-street parking space in the neighborhood. The parking use is consistent with what's going on behind most of the other buildings along that stretch of East Broadway in the rear on Silver Street. Most of them have parking spaces behind the building. So this would create one space for this building.
There's no parking at all for this building?
There's no parking at all for this building.
Okay. Tell us about your community process.
We conducted a butters meeting on March 5th, and there were no, nobody showed up.
So why did we go there then?
We were placed on the subcommittee list in error.
Oh, right, 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 right. Okay, and how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings apply. You'd have no objection if the paving surface for the parking was pervious?
I'm sure they'd be amenable to that.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support, since there is no parking on this street, and this is consistent with what a number of other buildings have done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Olwick from Councilor Bill Nahan's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the relief requested with the proviso, that the surface be pervious, and that at least gives some drainage back and softens it a little bit.
Understood.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 564-049, 783 East Broadway. This is to extend living space into the basement area by finishing the basement. Violation is Article 15, Section 1, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Cahill, 58 Hartshorn Street, Reading, Massachusetts.
Alice Gronski, 2064 Dorchester Avenue.
Please tell us what you're proposing.
So we, we had eight hundred fifty square feet, per se, in the basement, and we were, I guess, allowed to do five hundred. We're asking to do another three fifty in the front, which is basically just to add another bedroom. But the whole square footage of the basement, you know, hasn't changed, it's just, it's a matter of adding living space in the front.
Will be the total square footage be?
It's, so after doing underpinning walls, it'll be about eight fifty to nine hundred, depending on how.
And what's the use of the space?
It's just as an added bedroom in the front.
A bedroom?
Yes.
How many bedrooms are in the basement?
This would be three. I'm sorry, so this would be two. There's a room in the back that you can make into a basement or a living area or whatever, just.
Says family room, bedroom one, bedroom two, bedroom three.
Correct, so this would be like the third, I guess. But the back could be a bedroom, or it could be a living space. It hasn't really been decided yet.
No, but the back is labeled as family room.
Okay, yeah, so then it, this would be the, this would be the third bedroom.
Plus two baths, right?
This would be the third bedroom in the house, but I guess the second bedroom in the basement, I think that's what it was.
There's a third bedroom in the basement.
Wait, let's backtrack. How many units in this building?
Two.
Two units?
Correct.
Okay, and you have the first floor unit?
Yes.
So how, what's on the first floor?
The first floor is a master bedroom and an open living kitchen area.
Okay, and, and what, and a full bath?
A full bath and a half bath.
Okay, and so what's going to be in the basement?
It would be, this would be another full ba, full bedroom with a bath, and there would be another full bedroom plus a bedroom or a family area. That's like a smaller ten-by-eleven area.
So this unit would have a total of how many bedrooms?
Three or four. This would be the third or the fourth.
Make us a decision.
So I guess this would be the fourth, we'll call it.
There'll be four bedrooms?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, what's the floor to ceiling height?
In the basement, it would be eight.
Eight?
Seven foot six.
Seven foot six, but yeah, it'd be.
And is there a possibility of this becoming another unit?
No.
By any of the layouts or anything?
Not, not really.
No? Okay. And the utilities are separate?
They are.
Okay. Is, any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we cannot go on record in support at this time. We did hold an abutters meeting, I believe on March 5th, on this proposal, and there were several abutters who had concerns about the increase in density in this area. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Olwick, Councilor Bill Nahan's office, we'd like to echo the statements of the Mayor's office.
Given those facts, may I have a motion?
Motion denied.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry, one opposition? Mr. Chin, motion carries. Next case.
Calling next case, calling BOA 545-817, 4450 O Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a four-family, add one story to the existing building, the remainder of the building to be renovated, and basement to be finished. The rear decks and roof decks to be installed, occupancy to remain the same. Building is to be sprinkled. Violation is Article 15, Section 1. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 18, Section 1. The minimum front yard requirement is insufficient. And Article 20, Section 1. Minimum rear yard requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to confirm occupancy of an existing four-family dwelling. It's two units on the left, two units on the right, semi-attached building. This property has been taxed as a two-family since at least 1985. I don't think that there, the occupancy is in dispute. Likely was just not clear in the, in the building jacket at ISD. It has always been used as a, as a four-family, I should say, taxed as a four-family. The proposal.
So the only violation, the violations are FAR, front and rear yard.
Front and rear, exactly.
So it's, it's front and rear yard is because of the envelope of the building? You're not changing that?
Well, the front certainly isn't changing. There would be a vertical addition here to create four bi-level units as opposed to four flats right now. So there is a vertical addition to the building, which adds, obviously, to the floor area ratio, as does the extension into the basement. So we have the FAR violation based upon the expansion of the living space. The front yard is not changing whatsoever. That's based on, the violation is incurred due to the vertical, the vertical extension. The same with the rear, although I do point out that while the overall rear yard setback is not changing, there is, at the back of the structure, an enclosed two rear stairwells. The notches on each side at the rear are being filled in, out to the, the rearmost portion of the existing building wall. So it's being filled in on the left and the right, but again, it is not increasing what is already the existing rear yard setback. If you look on EX4, your sheet EX4 at elevation number three, you can see the elevation showing the dual rear stairway. And then if you go to the very next sheet, A1, for the proposed conditions, you'll see where on the basement level, that's actually a patio, the basement space is full walkout at the rear. And then when you go up to the first, second, first and second floors, and third floor above that, those are decks. So that is being filled in, but again, only to the existing rearmost portion of the building, we're not exceeding the existing building envelope in terms of its footprint.
By getting rid of the second means of degress, they've not incurred building code violation?
There's, it's a full walkout. I'm not sure which units Mr. Pizzani was referring to, but at the basement level, it's a full walkout, and the, in the proposed plans.